Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session Agenda. For this Tuesday, November twelve, two thousand and twenty-four. And welcome to those of you who are here with us in the council chambers tonight, as well as those of you who may be joining us from home. We have several items for discussion, the first of which is a Joint Community Services Advisory Board meeting. And so if you all want to come on up, if you can gather around and share the microphones, we'd love to have you introduce yourselves and then tell us a little bit about the work plan and some of the funding issues coming up this year.
Good evening, Deputy, or I'm sorry, evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss and council members. My name is Kyle Franklin, and I am the current Community Services Advisory Board Chairperson. And with me tonight, I have the Vice Chair Darren Lowry. We have Mike Lackady back in the gallery, along with Shelby Taylor and our staff liaison Shannon Bennett. We are here to briefly share with you about our two thousand and twenty-five human service funding recommendations. I have personally lived in Lakewood for nearly three years, and I've served on this board for about two of those years. I am grateful to have a good job, a comfortable home, and enough food in my fridge for all five people who live in my home. But I realize that this is a privilege that is not afforded to all of our neighbors. And as such, I'm grateful to be able to serve on this board by addressing the council-approved strategic areas of support for access to food, access to health and behavioral health services, crisis stabilization, emotional support to youth programming, and housing assistance and homeless prevention. Darren is going to share briefly the accomplishments from two thousand and twenty-four and the work plan for two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, Kyle. So basically, I've been on the board for about a year, a little more than a year. So in January of two thousand and twenty-four, we discussed spending strategies for the opioid settlement funds and agreed to procure a community needs consultant through issuing an RFP and request for qualifications inviting the community to submit project bids in two thousand and twenty-five this coming year. In March, we presented human services funding priorities and finalized the application and the rating tool to the council. In June, we reviewed the city council feedback on human services funding priorities and finalized the application and the rating tool. And once again, in June, we released the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six human services funding application within August ninth due date. In August, we reviewed and rated twenty-nine applications. In September, we deliberated, deliberated on application ratings. And then in October, we held virtual applicant interviews on two different days in October. And then November presented the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six human services funding recommendations to the council, which is what we're doing tonight. Next year, two thousand and twenty-five, human services contract performance, be looking at all the contracts and seeing how they're performing. Looking at the two thousand and twenty-six human services funding recommendations. Approving the two thousand and twenty-four consolidated annual performance evaluation report. Have a, we'll have a public hearing on community development, housing and service needs. And then we'll address the opioid funds distribution recommendation. And last but not least, approve the draft CDBG home five-year consolidated plan. And that's, that's our, our stuff for this year and next year.
Questions?
You know, it's a lot of work you folks go through to review the applications and the funding recommendations that flow from the funding priorities. Ends up being the big part of the workload, I'm sure. So unless there's any other questions about the work plan, we can kind of roll into the funding recommendations. Because I think, Kyle, you're, you're spot on that many of us are very, very fortunate, but there's so many in the community that are less fortunate. So we're proud to be able to do what we can with our one percent for human services funding.
To that end, I'll provide a brief overview of how we arrived at these recommendations tonight. As Darren mentioned, in March, we sought input on the service strategies from the Community Collaboration and Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board. And both groups agreed that the existing strategies were extremely, extremely relevant. And on March twenty-fifth, council approved those funding strategies, application and rating tools. Again, as Darren mentioned, in September and August, or August and September, we did interviews and review, I'm sorry, review process evaluating the twenty-five human, twenty-nine human services funding requests totaling eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars and eight hundred and fifty thousand, fifty dollars. And then in October, we interviewed each of those organizations that applied for funding. We individually assessed the applications using a rubric as a framework for scoring. And all of the ratings were tallied and an average score was created. The proposals were ranked in order by average score from highest to lowest. This cycle especially though, we learned that our rubric and scoring system seemingly disfavor fledging organizations and, and/or organizations that have not yet received funding in the past. As such, we used them as initials, we used them as the initial basis for evaluation. And during the interview sessions with applicants, we sought out clarifying, clarifying information and use both our heads and our hearts to determine how best with limited resources to support the good work these organizations accomplish in our community. All of the applicants being recommended met the application criteria, but because program funding requests far exceed available resources, we created the following criteria used for recommending specific dollar amounts based on ranking for each strategy. So the highest proposals in each category, I'm sorry, in each priority are recommended to receive up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Second highest rated to receive up to twenty thousand dollars. Third highest to receive up to sixteen thousand dollars. Fourth highest rated to receive up to fifteen thousand dollars. And fifth and sixth rated proposals are recommended to receive up to twelve thousand.
Just a quick question on that.
Yes.
Was the, the funding sort of level something that you folks decided was kind of best opportunity to spread the available resources?
The, the applications do ask the number of people who are specifically affected by the dollars. Obviously, something like a food bank or a food pantry, they're able to stretch their dollars a whole lot more and affect more families than some of the others. But we did look at what they were asking for and, and try to do our best to, to respond accordingly. So the first attachment in front of you is the summary of funding recommendations and the associated amounts. The second attachment is the summary of the total human services funding provided over the last five biennium. We are recommending twenty-eight programs of the twenty-nine applicants for funding in two thousand and twenty-five. And program funding recommendations range from nine thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars. And if our funding recommendations are approved, funds will become available in January two thousand and twenty-five. As Darren alluded to, there is an audit process so that they can, they'll come back to us with their success with all sorts of data and we can, we can confirm that we want to continue their funding as well.
Mr. Bokey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great, great work. And it's always hard when you've got really good groups that do a lot of good work, some very well-known in the community. And you know, you're, you've got about sixty percent of the money that everybody wants. So I'm glad you're making those decisions. A number of these are right in the community, right? You mentioned communities and schools and, and full disclosure, I've been on the board at communities and schools. I was also on the board of the Lincoln Dental Clinic, think very highly of both organizations.
Got a lot of money.
We know that they're in place. Others are not. Others are more Tacoma-centric and that kind of thing. How, how do you feel about the work that some of these groups that are not necessarily physically located in Lakewood are doing in the Lakewood community? Are they actually providing services in the Lakewood community? Or are they, and we just don't know about it, or they're doing satellite things, or are they, are they able to show you that they're reaching enough Lakewood folks?
If they have to.
They have, I mean, that's part of the application process, right? But from, from my, from my perspective, you know, I, I'm actually involved in a community service organization here in Lakewood. And we actually receive for our food pantry, think food from emergency food network, from St. Leo's and several other places. We actually get support from those outside organizations, but they actually provide things that we give to the community members in, in our local area. So I think many of them, even though they're located outside of the, like St. Leo's, I think is one of the largest food banks or food, yeah, food banks, food distribution systems in the county. They, they provide a lot of support for families in Lakewood, even though they're located in Tacoma.
And they're able to show you this pretty well by zip code?
They're actually, I think those larger food bank, banks are actually better at collecting data than the smaller organizations are because they just have the, I think, the people, they're, they're able to figure that out. It's hard, though, when they're serving homeless people to know what address to assign to those folks. So many times what they'll ask is, where was the last place you slept? And if it's in Lakewood, then they report it as Lakewood. If it's not Lakewood, it's Tacoma or wherever it was. So they actually collect quite a bit of data because they also have other grants they have to report on. So.
And if I could just add that, as the human services coordinator, my job is to collect their quarterly billings. I'm sorry, my name is Shannon Bennett. I am the human services coordinator for this fine city family. But yes, so quarterly I have them submit their billings. And on those quarterly reports, they are to report the number of Lakewood residents that they have served. When we create their contracts, they know that the money that we give them is to serve only Lakewood residents. And so in their contract, their outcomes only are inclusive of Lakewood residents. And so also, when I go and I do their monitoring during the summer, you know, they don't show me the files, but again, we talk about the fact that we, they are Lakewood-centric in their services. And I can give you examples of two of the individuals that do in fact have satellite campuses. Oasis Youth Center, although they are Tacoma-centric on Pacific, they do have their satellite campus here on Wednesdays that they're trying to grow. Also, we have Making a Difference Foundation. They are located on McKinley. But they have their, their delivery, their home delivery that they serve a lot of our Lakewood residents.
Great. Yeah. And I noticed you did Emergency Food Network Home Delivery and, and I know somebody actually get, receives that and it really has made a difference in their lives. I mean, he told me, he's like, wow, this saves me a lot of money every month. So good, good on you guys. I, I do really appreciate the work. Diving it up the way you did it, and there's like five categories here. When you were going through the process, and I mean, I could just look at the raw numbers and who got turned down or who didn't get necessarily turned down, but didn't get enough. If, if you had more money, would you just go, let me redo it. Where did you see when you were hearing the presentations? In your mind, where did you feel like there was the biggest gaps in, or the biggest need?
Personally, so not to speak on behalf of the board, but personally, the reality is that housing costs a whole lot more than food does. Until there's affordable housing, we're always going to see homelessness. We're always going to see issues with homelessness, homelessness, issues with people trying to get into housing. You know, the, the cost for a standard apartment is first and last month's rent, security deposit. I mean, around here for a standard two-bedroom apartment, that can cost you seven to ten thousand dollars. So what can we do with twenty-five thousand dollars when that's the max of what we're able and willing to, to give to an organization? So of course, we would love to support every single one of these charities and organizations that doing the work, that is doing the work that we cannot do. But the reality is that the biggest bang for the buck, especially, you know, we're investing in the future of children through a lot of our, our school and education projects, investing in the growth of communities like the Tillicum Community Center. And then ensuring that people have food. That's the basics of what we can do. So if we had more funding, we would absolutely want to support more, especially, you know, like I said, personally, I think we'd love to do more with housing, but but when it comes down to it, you really can't do much with twenty-five thousand dollars.
And I, and I will give you kudos on your reasoning on Rebuilding Together South Sound, which is, which is an organization this council has been very supportive of. And is, is, is a, a very good partner and has been a long-term partner actually for this, for this city in helping us maintain housing because we have an older housing stock. But I, but I want you to know, I think your, your thought process behind it, they're still working through ARPA money is, is a good process. And I think that that helped free up money for other things. I think that was a good move. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I apologize for being away and not being able to be with you while you had to go through this process. And I appreciate all the work to be able to go and do that. But to follow up on Mr. Bokey's last comment, and I noted that you considered the fact that because they are recipients of ARPA money, decided not to fund Rebuilding Together South Sound. But why didn't you apply that to the other applicants who are also recipients of ARPA money?
I wouldn't say that we, we took from one pot to, to serve the other. You know, we, we recognize with your, your comment that Nourish, for example, gets ARPA money. And so it's not robbing Peter to pay Paul by any means. The reality is that when we looked at, at the, the ratings of the applications themselves and then went through the interview process, something like Nourish had a very high rating, whereas Rebuilding Together South Sound had a low rating in general. That's where it had to be both the head with the ratings and everything else and the heart telling us where to go.
Okay. And then I guess my other concern is, is that in the past, communities and schools has often always, always operated across the community, multiple after-school programs. And in past, the current biennium, in the past, we funded them. They've made an application regarding their after-school programs and they've gotten that funded. And this time, it appears that they were looking at gaming the process by submitting four applications. That totaled more and that although you looked at that and you reduced each of the applications to something, in the end, they came out ahead of where they have in the past of, of, of being able to go and do that. And I'm concerned that you're encouraging, there are others on this list that operate in either multiple locations or things to do that, that in future years, they're going to parse out their, and submit multiple applications. I mean, you know, you know, a number of bienniums ago, the process was we would only consider one application for each person. And then we went, well, if you have some significantly different programs you could submit to. Essentially, communities and schools operates essentially, they do really good work. They operate essentially the same way in all the different levels of schools, but we've rewarded them with more funding by just chopping it up and, and submitting multiple applications. And because they write applications well, all of those applications scored well. Okay. To be able to go and do that. But I think that there is a a potential that others will notice. And that, and, and, and that you will need to deal with this in two years. As, as you look forward to doing that. So, you know, you know, I, I would venture to say that I look, look to go and do that. That, and then my other concern had to be, had to do with the food banks that were funded. Nourish operates two food banks and looking to close one and, and open it in another location over the next biennium. But one of their food banks is located one block away from the food bank at the Tillicum Community Center. They essentially serve the same people on just different days of the week. And I didn't know, you know, to the extent that their application was for their food banks across the city, that that seems to be a duplication, a duplication of, of, of effort that's going off. Now, we just approved a sub-area plan for Tillicum. And one of the elements of the sub-area plan was to strengthen and ensure the continued presence in activities of the community services center that's there. So I'm meaning to see that, 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 that one of their programs is, is getting funded to be able to go and do that. But, but I, but I am concerned that we're also funding impartially the, the food bank that is a block away. Just on a different day. And like I said, I didn't get a chance to actually read the nourish application that, that they talked about, that they were going to operate those multiple food banks as a part of their justification. That, that seems inconsistent with trying to avoid a duplication of efforts through coordinated partnerships. But did, when, when nourish made their presentation to you, did they address how they didn't see that as a duplication of effort?
I think it's a good question. I, you know, um, living in Tillicum and, and being involved in the community center, I had to recuse myself from quite a bit of the deliberations for, for this recommendation to the council. But I do think that, that nourish, you know, does serve quite a few people. And even though they're serving the people two blocks or a block away from the community center, we still on, on a Friday afternoon, we open up for a few hours and we have sixty-one people last Friday that actually showed up for, for more food. So the, the need is still there. I don't know. And I also, you know, because we, I think we all took this very seriously and we, we looked at every single application and we really tried to make, to stretch the dollars the best we could. And food insecurity is, is a big deal in that community right now. You know, whether it'll get better over the next few years, I just don't know. But I think that, you know, I wasn't involved in the decision for, for this versus the other organization, but I can say there's a lot of need there right now.
Well, yes, I would say, and I agree that there is a lot of need and I suspect that there are, what with the, the home delivery and, 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 and other things to do that. But there are also then some geographical dispersion in the city. For instance, the Montevista neighborhood has zero food banks. Okay, that Tillicum, one of our smaller neighborhoods now has got that they actually have three, but two of which we're funding in, 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 in this way. I think that nourish probably directly as a food bank serves the most people in the city. I think they're, 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 they're their most robust organizations in, in terms to do that. And you know, the Emergency Food Network is, is kind of a next level up supplier of things to food banks. So that, so there's, there are many food banks that are not even on our list that benefit from getting things from, from the Emergency Food Network. I, I guess you would just guess that looking forward and as you do the and given the state of the idea of looking at partnerships and people working together. As you go through the first year of the biennium, if you could satisfy yourself that the nourish food bank and Tillicum and the community center food bank are really serving to some extent, different populations of people to do that. You know, one is operated out of a church that's there on one side of the elementary school and the other is on the, on the community center to be able to go and do that. And, and I don't know, it, it may be that there are different people or it may be that they're just on, on this day of the week, you go there and on this day of the week, you go there. But, but it, I, I think it's just in, in looking at the viability of this distribution is to look at it. You know, after the first year to make sure that we're not doing that while we're ignoring a couple of the other neighborhoods in the, in, in, in the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely, Darren. Go ahead.
I, I think the, the first point you made, Mike, about the multiple applications is a trend and that, you know, we're going to have to look at because, you know, you know, one organization putting in four applications and they're a great organization. I'm, I'm, I've worked with them in schools. I know what they do. They're, they're amazing. But it will become a trend if we keep approving multiple applicants through this process, we'll end up with, you know, more and more organizations with, with multiple applications and, and once again, not funding things that we want to fund. That, that kind of diversify. What was really nice about the, the, our team is that we broke down what the applications, which category they fit in of each of the, the service areas. And so it was really neat to look at, you know, how many food banks were just serving food and how many were doing different things in, in the community. And I think it helped make some of the decisions that we made. But I think multiple applications, we're going to have to do something with that for the next round for sure.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for the work. It's a lot of work that you put into it. We appreciate that. Mike, I was trying to understand the scoring. And it says average score. Do you have a recommended score that you go from?
So the rubric itself is broken down. So the rubric itself is broken down, uh, a total of forty six points is possible. Um, and each score, I'm sorry, each question that they respond to uh gets anywhere from one to six points, I think, or zero to six points technically. Um, and so it it makes sure that we're they're all on a loving level playing field to a certain extent, um, since since we are all, um, so like question number one, for example, is is the budget request proportionate to the number of Lakewood residents served? Um, if the answer is yes, they get one point. If the answer is no, no point. Is the organization, oh, uh, is it the best fit with the City of Lakewood's human services funding strategy? Um, if it's got strong alignment, um, they're eligible for six points, moderate alignment, three points, no alignment, zero points. Um, so we do try to break it down so that um, we're all kind of coming at it from the same lenses, uh, or at least have the same, uh, no one category is gonna blow it out of the wa- out of the water.
Okay, so how help me understand how one average score was thirty four point eight, they were funded. But then there was a thirty five point that did not get funded. How did it come to that?
Sure, that's that is partially where the head and the heart comes in. Um, you know, if if we went solely off of the application scores, then community and schools would get a hundred thousand dollars of funding and somebody else would really get next to nothing.
He's saying hypothetically maybe.
Well, anyway, um, you know, if if it were an algorithm that we're we're just determining it, then then it wouldn't allow us to. One of the things that we knew, um, the teamwork that initially got low scores, she came in and had a stellar interview. And and we said, you know, we want to support this and she can't, um, she cannot run her process or her program without this funding. And so we said, even though the score was what thirty five, I think thirty four, we looked at it and we said, gosh, this is a really great program and we want to fund it. We want to see it get off the ground. Um, so that's kind of where the 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 head and the heart have to meet and have to to work in sometimes in in contention with each other and sometimes in cooperation with each other.
Yeah, well, thank you. I just didn't, was trying to make that connection there, but I understand.
Yeah, I would also add, I was one of the people. So, uh, we are all individually reading each of these applications and then come together and discuss. And I quickly realized personally, I was one of the harsher creators, if you will. And what was really neat was having the opportunity to be in those interviews and ask a bunch of questions that I thought maybe weren't necessarily addressed as adequately as I'd like, or I just had follow up questions. And then based off of that, I actually changed some of my ratings of like up to like a plus ten of just, well, you did address it. I understand it now. I'm I'm fully on board. So I think that can also account for some of the discrepancies.
I understand. Thank you so much.
So if you had, you know, your financial magic wand with your five hundred thousand dollars, would you have spread it less thinly and perhaps focused or aggregated funds in uh food support and housing as opposed to emotional supports and youth programming? Or from the interviews, did you feel like we're doing the right thing? That's a good investment for the hundred eighty thousand. Because, you know, it's it's hard to do so much across the board with limited funds. And you kind of wonder, is the need more aligned to food and housing or are we doing the right thing with the youth programming?
We have talked, you know, in in two different veins. We've talked about do we focus on two of the priorities and really see what kind of splash we can make in the short term? And and in a sense, I don't think that we want to run the risk of of hurting or betraying any of our residents by doing that. Um, at the same time, it would be really amazing to see what could happen if one organization said, gosh, you know, we just got a huge grant and we're gonna do this and 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 see if it's something that can be replicated. Um, so it's hindsight is not quite twenty twenty. Um, and the reality is that we're not working with with uh with a vision to what is going to happen in the future. So it's been part of the conversation. I can't say where we've landed necessarily. Um, I think putting this aside and just talking about the opioid settlement funds, one of the reasons that we've kind of put a pause on that is because we want to be able to say what would what uh what applications or what um proposals would come before us if we had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to give uh for programming or or to make a big splash versus what we're doing here with this funding. Um, and so I I think that may be a good test run, depending on how we ultimately decide what to do with those funds uh to see if this is how we want to continue or if we if we do want to focus on two emphases.
Absolutely. Yeah, that money could be used for, you know, potentially youth programming, education, programming, those kinds of things and backfill some of the the food and housing needs that you've talked about. Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just to to follow up on that is is that, you know, we are sort of working across the use this one percent funding to broadly benefit the community in multiple ways. That's going on and the and the and the option you discussed about taking a look at a couple of very large grants to do something. I guess that I would encourage you over the next biennium as one of the things that you're going to be doing is looking to make recommendations regarding opioid abatement funds is that I I think that maybe this spreading out with multiple small efforts is less appropriate in that arena in terms of looking at a a small number of of robust things that can attack a problem and actually make a difference in a measurable way in a relatively short period of time. So that 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 may be there are both sides of that question. But uh as as you get into your next year's work plan and you're and you're looking at 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 coming up with how we're going to address recommending to us about opioid abatement funds. I think I at least would be open to a very small number of rather larger uh efforts in that we just be starting out and most of them would efforts in that arena might well be characterized initially as pilots, see if they work.
Well, and yeah, we're gonna be continually asked by the county to perhaps regionalize our funding, as you probably have already heard. Uh, and there may be some benefit as you go through the process to figure out how best to leverage the funds. Obviously keeps them in Lakewood, working in Lakewood, but there may be some opportunities out there we're not even aware of yet, but go ahead.
Well, and the other thing I was gonna say is that, you know, when you when you look across these, um, one of the questions that we do ask on the on the application is how they partner with other organizations. Um, and and so there is an emphasis on on, you know, with communities and schools, it could be, oh, we hear this this child doesn't have enough food at home and then they're referred to this other service. Or, um, you know, whatever it is, it kind of goes across the board where a lot of these organizations probably, I'd say at least eighty percent, maybe more um, have plans or have partnerships in place to ensure that multiple aspects of of people's needs, um, crisis or otherwise are attended to. Um, and and so in in one sense, I think we are doing the right thing just by by creating the partnerships or by by spreading and funding the way that we are. But again, uh, it's a conversation to have over the next year or two years and see if there are changes that we need to make.
Um, and I just wanted to make a comment about that, you know, we we do have our community collaboration meeting that meets once a month. And I will say a lot of our human service providers are our regular attendees. And what I love about um what we've done is we've kind of done a take our show on the road. And over the past couple of years, our human service providers have actually hosted our meetings um at their locations. And to see this immediate synergy between the groups work. Um, we always ask, um, I I encourage them to bring their meeting, bring organizational updates and asks to the meeting so that we can do just that where our money is working together.
I I just want to say that I'm very proud of the city because there are not an infinite number of funds to help people. And I think the city is doing a terrific job. I'm new to this committee and I love being on the committee and I know everybody on the committee takes it very seriously. Uh, we try to make the best recommendations that we can. But it makes me very proud to be living in this community when when we uh commit to helping folks who are in need. Um, so I want to say thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna ask everyone for a brief takeaway from the process and that is a beautiful one. Thank you. Do you have any other thoughts? Because it's sobering. And I remember sitting in the Rotary Scholarship Committee, uh, several years running and getting the applications for the little monies that we give on Rotary and just the amazing challenges some of these students go through with you know, single parent families or, you know, dual parent families that are working for jobs or whatever. And these kids at fifteen, sixteen are doing what they can. You know, to make a go of it when they've got five or six other kids in the fam- or whatever the scenario is. And it's just really, really challenging but heartwarming that we have an opportunity to impact them some way, somehow, albeit small on occasion, but in a very positive way. So the work you do is really important.
Um, I do want to add one thing I just thought about things, um, you know, thinking about community, um. This is one of the first years that we've done this without Edith Wallace. Um, so if family's watching, um, I know that when she was sick at the end, I went and visited her. Um, and she was very happy to hear that the board um was carrying the torch. So shout out to Edith.
Absolutely. Many years of fine service, yeah. Well, unless there's anything else for the good of the order, again, thank you. Your great work, heartfelt contributions and passion for the community. We all feel it. We just wish we had another two million dollars to give away, right? That'd be great. Yeah, Todd doesn't have two million in her back pocket, I don't think. She'll tell us about that later, but I think she keeps a pretty tight rein on us, so. We don't even have cookies tonight. She's cutting back so much. Often, we rarely have heat in here, so, you know, it is. Thank you both, all of you. Okay, so next. I know, nothing. We do. Yeah, it's me, me, myself and I. Yeah, exactly. I wouldn't. Yeah, I wouldn't. So next we have a an outstanding recitation of the twenty twenty four lodging tax funding allocations from Ms. Kraus. And I'm happy to fill in as needed here. As the guy who sat through the process.
Okay, so I actually didn't attend the meeting, but I'm here to present on behalf of Dame Capula.
Good for you.
Who was here and but I do know about the meeting and what went on. So the funds that were available total three million five hundred and eighty nine thousand three hundred fifty nine, and I'm looking at page thirteen. So we received eighteen applications, all but one group presented at the lodging tax committee. Um, after hearing those presentations, the committee recommended awarding to all um applicants, including the one that did not apply or give the presentation. And that decision was made because their uh ask was very similar to what they had done in previous years.
Yeah, the total asks for less than the available monies just for tourism promotion activities.
Yes, so the total ask was one million two hundred and forty seven thousand eight hundred and fifty. And that was the amount that was recommended by the lodging tax committee.
And leaves us with a little bit in the reserves, like a hundred and seventy some thousand if something comes up. And it doesn't obviously touch any of the capital monies that we've set aside and are accumulating.
Yeah, so the hundred and one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for the McGavick Center comes off from the capital portion of it. So based on the awards and the um the funding that was estimated to be available after that allocation, leaves about two million four hundred and forty three thousand dollars. So that's that's.
That's the recommendation. So the listing you can see on page fourteen of the packet there. That's again, as Ms. Kraus indicated, the the total request came in, there were less than the available funds for twenty twenty five. And so the committee elected to fully fund all the asks, leaving some money in reserve. Mr. Bokeen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think I'll ask you the questions. So there weren't any other capital requests, I guess. No, no one else came up with capital. Appreciate seeing the Lakes Cross Country Booster Club. I'm assuming that's for the Fort Stillicum invite to help them with that because that brings in hundreds of teams every year. So thank you. Could I, I I'd like to know a little bit about the Lakewood Playhouse. I I mean, I haven't, I have to admit, I haven't been there for a while. What what was their ask about? It says total project cost three hundred and forty two thousand. Um, we're giving them a hundred. What what is this? Can you enlighten me? Can, if you can, if it might not be a fair question.
Sure, I need to kind of go to the um presentation notes here to reflect, refresh my recollection.
So that's on page nineteen?
Yeah. So you you know, here's the challenge with the playhouse. I think that it's just me speaking a little bit out of turn, but you know, listening to the presentation and answering your question, they came out of a couple of years of leadership transition where they didn't have a significant annual funding event. And I think they found themselves i- in a real ditch. And the new board and the new executive director are doing, in my humble opinion, yeoman's work and trying to bring it back to what the community has enjoyed historically. And it takes, you know, resources to do it. And so as I recall his outline of of what they were trying to do to kind of get back on track, it was, you know, the the larger number. But they made the the, I don't want to call it modest, but modest request at the hundred, which was higher than a years past, uh, frankly. But I think they're trying to make sure that they get themselves on an operational footing to do uh more and better programming so that they can continue to attract people to come visit Lakewood and Lakewood Theater, Lakewood Playhouse rather and do the things that we all want them to do, which is to come and dine, you know, some heads and beds if we can. Uh, but to shop and and dine in Lakewood and enjoy theater production at the playhouse.
Do, what was the overall, I mean, a a lot of stuff went to the city and we're very proud of our events. Um, and and I know coming out of COVID, a lot of arts groups really have had a difficult time. I guess I preface my remarks of saying, you know, first of all, the our ability to have the LTAC at the whole seven percent, because I don't know if we became a city today that we'd even get that. The the building of our, you know, and I look at the LTAC things at Department of Revenue and there's a lot of cities that get none, right? So this is, this is actually a very nice pot of money that's for specific uses that really helps, I think, improve our community. But I I I do want to kind of get an idea of the feel for when you got the presentations. You know, we know what the city's stuff does. We know what we're doing with the McGavick Center. But when you hear from and and I know you're familiar with Lake Wall Gardens, so include them in um, in 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 your discussion, Lake Wall Gardens, the Pierce County Tourism people, he's on the board, kind of what their thoughts are and what's going on in Lakewood. Are we making progress in bringing not just our community events, which I think we do a great job with, but progress in in making Lakewood a destination?
No, it's a really good question. I, you know, I would have to say yes, uh, because you know, I I don't have numbers. The thing about lodging tax, because now I do it in two different cities, it's really hard to quantify success, I think. You do the best you can. You obviously have to fill out your application that your activities are going to improve the heads and beds calculation and draw people from outside the fifty mile radius. But, but you know, it's hard to do it. The. The monies that are spent on the cross-country tournament, easy peasy, right? Cause they get teams from around the state. You know that they're coming to stay overnight likely for the big cross-country tournament. That's an easier one. It's, it's harder on the others, I think, to calculate overnight stays, but you, you do the best you can. You, you put on the programs and. People come and you're hopeful that they, they uh, do those tourism-related activities, including dining and staying. On the Lakewood Gardens piece, to answer that portion of your question, the new executive director, Justin Anderson. Uh, came with a board member and talked about his work experience and the big changes they're trying to make to host. Larger, more regional events to attract more people and. Those of us who may have gone to the last couple of years where we funded the winter solstice activities and they did a few lights in the trees and. They had a lot of people there. Uh, they're taking it to the next level with his expertise. And almost making a mini zoo lights, you know, for the holiday. And that's, I think, really going to attract people that. Don't necessarily want to go to Sprinker because you can't get your car there because you're going to be waiting in line for an hour or two. Uh, or they don't want to drive all the way to Point Defiance, but what if Lakewood became that center? Not only for our residents, for others outside of our area, or they didn't, you know, one, they're going to start this year. So they're doing all sorts of activities like that. And I do think, and we funded them to significant amount in this. Latest round, I do think they're going to do some very significant uh, activities there that will make. Lakewood and Lakewood more regionally known for art, culture, music and other specialty events. The fact that we now have that parking there along Gravel Lake Drive is a huge deal for them and they thanked us for that. Uh, the new board is emphatic about staying on top of the budget. Uh, maintaining the gardens, which had been something different, you know, over the last few years. And I, I do. Sense uh, a new enthusiasm and vigor for programming that's going to put more of Lakewood on the map for people.
Did the, two more questions, one short one for Lakewood. Did the carriage house get done?
No.
Okay.
So what happened with the carriage house and not on the board anymore? Um, but they put a pause on that because the. The construction costs were starting to climb exponentially like other projects we're all aware of. And their resources were not catching up with the escalating costs of the project. So they put a pause on that. Because I think they're rethinking or value engineering. Uh, the project scope, because initially it had a two-story thing and they were having an artist and residence thing up there. It's like, okay. You can't afford it, you need to chop it. So they're re-engineering that. It will likely have bathrooms. Uh, they'll have a guest experience on the first floor, but it's not going to be the level of, of what they had before. They did get a, a Heritage Capital Grand Ford from the state. Um, they got a lot of donations from a lot of people for that. And so they have to complete something. I'm not exactly sure what the updated. Value engineered scope will look like yet.
So, another question in the universe of kind of open-ended questions I'm asking tonight. When you sat through this, and again, this might not be a fair question. Which applications really? Kind of surprised you that you didn't know about, you didn't know that you thought were surprisingly. Is that, if that's the right word.
Came across to me as a wow. This, okay, the new executive director. Uh, one of the board members, because the board had it turn over too, uh, because they had some challenges and they brought some people in with a lot of. Not only financial acumen, but a financial wherewithal. And uh, they're uh, rightsizing their, their finances and their activities. So I was really impressed by that. Um. You know, the, the city's ask is about three hundred and seventy-some odd thousand of the overall piece for our various events. Obviously, we do a good job. So you have to kind of salute what the city is doing uh, for those kinds of things, but. Uh, the Lakes Cross Country Booster Club, frankly, I thought they could have made a larger ask, but they kept it pretty conservative with uh.
How about the Lakewood Chamber Commerce Memorial Day Concert? What is that? I mean, it's a Memorial Day concert.
Yeah, they're trying to do something new on that, I think, with that concert. You know, the other big piece that we spend money on, which is the uh, tourism. Uh, organization that, that Dean Burke is involved with, the Tacoma Pierce County Tourism Authority. And they do a lot of good work regionally, not only with athletic. Uh, activities, but also uh, the mini conventions and they try to divert stuff over to McGavick Center as much as they can. And I think that's a good thing. You know, I, I think that once we get the H Barn Project done. And maybe some others, there, there is that middle need for meeting space. It's not as big as McGavick. And it's bigger than the old Lakewood Terrace. Now it's the History Museum. They have some space and meeting space for people there. There, there is a need for that middle space. And I think that the tourism folks are fielding calls all the time. For organizations to have spaces and places to meet. And so I, I think that they do really good work for Lakewood. Uh, those guys, I, I, you know, Ms. Dodsworth is here. She can probably bolster my comment, maybe or maybe not, but. I think they do pretty good work for us, don't they? The tourism.
And they also have technology that actually, sorry, um, they are, um, cutting.
Here also the uh, Tacoma that you talked about, um, with Dean Burke and his team. They have the technology to actually get the numbers that are important. They can tell us. They work with us. They let us know how many people from outside fifty miles per. Fifty miles are um, are at your events, staying in hotels, and they have the ability to um, new technology. Whereas if there's something on their website, which I'm not sure if um, Rem's tied to, but she will be because they're a partner. If they have technology that if they click on something that is of interest to them and then they end up. Buying a hotel room or renting a car or doing that, they're, it's a little big brother, but the, the technology is out there and it's probably with your cell phone. Which we all know we're connected, but they actually have invested in that technology to help us determine it is a good use of our resources, that there, it is a good investment. And they are great partners because they help us be better partners, so.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, I think the Playhouse is going to be. Moving in the right direction. I, you know, I would tell you honestly that I think if we didn't have our funding at this level, they may or may not survive. Well, which is challenging to say, challenging to hear. Uh, it's an institution in the community, so we're probably making uh, a, an investment. For sure. And hopefully they'll, they'll grow into even more vibrant, self-sufficient organization. Mr. Brandstetter?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, in. In the past iterations of where we've been at, at this discussion. Um, one of the changes that took place a number of years ago had to do with defining. The kinds of projects that were eligible for capital dollars. Um, and they, they, they narrowed it down to say it's gotta be municipally owned or. There needs to be a municipal ownership stake in. Uh, it's something that, that, that is done. And, and I, yeah, and that, and that causes us to look at a nu- a number of things around. Um, Lakewood, for instance, uh, Lake Wall Gardens. Or if we were to want to invest in helping the. Fort Stillicum historical folks with capital costs regarding. The buildings that are there, but are currently statal. Okay, to be able to go into that. And so. However, we didn't in our legislative policy manual. Speak to looking to perhaps. Not going all the way back to where there were no restrictions, but to look at some middle ground of where. Some projects of where there is not necessarily ownership, but value to the city. Of becoming eligible for these and that's a legislative action that would have to take place because it was a legislative action that changed it. I believe. We may want to look at, is there a? A, a change we could recommend that maybe is saleable. To the legislature and in order to be saleable to the legislature, it has to be saleable to the lodging community.
This is, this is an excellent question because again, I'm grappling with this on a couple of fronts, right? When I started digging into this, and maybe Ms. Walker, if she has a minute, I know she's busy on something. Ms. Walker, do you have a minute? Got a, got a question for you. Is she me able to shed some light? Cause she was helping me on this issue. So when I was digging into it. You, you know, we've been under the impression that the restriction. Of a portion of our lodging tax funding for capital-related needs is a function of state law. It ain't. It's a function of city council ordinance that, that the council did back in two thousand twelve, thirteen-ish.
As Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I have answered this question numerous times.
Yeah, yeah.
And exactly the way that you're saying, and I don't mean to sound frustrated, but it's not a problem you're going to solve at the study session tonight.
No, no.
If you wish to revisit that, we can do that.
No, no, it's just an open discussion, but I, I appreciate that because it goes to your question. It isn't what we're doing here on this. But if it's something we want to change down the road, it's a function of our code as opposed to state law. Yeah, that was what I was just trying to say. So we can revisit that and address the restriction as appropriate in our own code.
Well, at an appropriate time, I think we should perhaps discuss. The parameters of projects that we would like to be able to have the lodging tax committee consider applications from. Uh, because I think where we've communicated is that people don't apply because they. Because of our policy, that's, that's why I, it was. My understanding that we made that change in policy and adopted that policy. At the instigation of some state's uh, efforts, but maybe not.
I think we were trying to build up a fund to do something big, you know, down the road.
Yeah, yeah. It may have been some, some guidance from Commerce that, who oversees this, that wanted that. Okay, but I think that's worth, worth looking into as there are. Um, a, a variety of entities that could have the potential to attract. Tourism visitors that should they. Make a capital investment in a facility of some sort.
Absolutely. Well, more to follow on that because uh, it is a study session tonight, so we're just reviewing the recommendations. Again. Uh, we can't um, up or down individual recommendations. We take the slate as a up or down from the Lodging Tax Committee. So, and that is by state law. Any else on that? Questions? Very good. So we'll move along then to the twenty twenty-five B schedule amendments. Again, we have Ms. Kraus for that. Start on page twenty-two of our packet.
So, um, we have Public Planning and Public Works Director Jeffrey Mac and Mary Dodsworth here. There is one, and this starts on your packet, um, page twenty-two, uh, page twenty-two. Uh, there is a somewhat minor change on the copies and duplication. And that really is for the body worn cameras, the video and redaction fee of adding that for seventy-seven cents per minute. Um, one thing I did not do is because there's a lot of changes, I didn't show all of the movement in the different categories. But I will say on page twenty-three, you'll see extra duty contracts. It's not in red. I didn't put it in red because there's no fee change. It's just a placement change. Um, moving it up here to the copies and duplications and including it and other fees. Because there was nowhere else after we moved stuff around, it didn't really fit anywhere else.
Yeah.
Okay.
On the body cam ones, since we're right there at that page, how do we come up with seventy-seven cents per minute?
So the seventy-seven cents per minute, this was calculated by our legal department and so that's very at, at the very beginning. So the legal department, under the summary recommended changes, explains how they arrive at.
The average cost of the employees working in, okay, I get it. Mind-numbing work, but okay.
Okay, and then we have Planning and Public Works Director who has the bulk of the red items, uh, and so he's going to cover that.
I will go ahead and start walking through. General increase that we looked at was in the hourly rate. Uh, spoke to this during the budget when we looked at it, but speaking to it again and where we're at. On the average day, with the number of viewers that I have, they have about fifty-six percent of their time that can be focused towards actual review. When we're looking at that, that's due to general information that they provide as well as time off for the eleven paid holidays. We have two weeks a year and then one week. A year when we look at for them being off six. So about eleven hundred and eighty hours is what we have available for each employee to look at annually. So when I look at that and I take their, uh, I'm looking at a line item and trying to. Equalize at a hundred percent cost recovery on the time they have full review. So when I speak to that, it's a hundred percent on the fifty-six percent that they can focus on review. That's because you can only use fees that you take in for permit. Or focus on actual review, but has to be used on the purpose for which it was taken in. So when I look at that and break down the total need we have, there are nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy hours that we look at. That actually go in every year for the reviewers. And then the cost to be equal on an hourly rate to pay that and break even comes out to a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. When you look at it, based on the full salary cost.
Okay.
So when we're looking at the hundred and twenty dollars, that is what it is looking at, is cost recovery on the actual permit review. Um, the one other addition we made this year was for a base fee for ninety dollars. That was actually added. And it's really to cover the cost of when we take in a permit, um, and anytime the permit tax have to handle it. That is time that we don't ever recoup back and when we look at it. So that ninety dollar base fee is something that's paid right out the gate. Then if the project doesn't move forward or they choose to get a refund, then we've already covered the cost of the permit tax handling and processing the intake of the permit, right? Let's make sure we stay uh, cost positive and don't lose money on that. Looking at the business license fees and we're moving through that, um, one of the items we came into was the cost of the actual program when we look at it. And in order to actually be able to cover the full cost of the program, we needed to switch the base license fee to ninety dollars when we look at it. Right, now we still kept a renewal fee that will come in and be ninety dollars. You'll look in your comment right here. This is a, a one line that we'll have to do. It does say the sixty. But it is actually ninety dollars. So screwing our hair there when we're looking at it. Okay. Uh, some of the specialty business license rates are moved as well in accordance with, um, keeping up with paying the cost of where we're at based on the total history of what we have. Moving over to page twenty-six, looking at the rental housing program. Again, the idea here was that on an annual basis, it was having a shortfall of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year to maintain the program. So we looked at it as to how do we make it cost neutral to, to fund itself. So it required taking it from a twelve dollar uh, annual flat rate to a fifty dollar base fee. And then for twenty dollars per additional unit. So if it was apartments for every additional unit, there would be a twenty dollar cost with that. Uh, when we look at that, it actually breaks even and moves it across the board and we should be good until twenty twenty-seven. Based on the allocation and what we're looking at to move that forward. We spoke about this during the budget, but I'll speak to it again. We looked at the other neighboring jurisdictions and what we had for the costs and where we fell out and we're right in line with everyone else. So if not lower than, so that was the change that we looked at there. Um, we did take over and GIS is shown with mine because GIS was recently pulled into the department and what we're looking at. It reflects the hundred and twenty dollar an hour change for any time they would spend on production of maps. We did go ahead and simplify the cost of what we're looking at and remove the actual printed maps because everything is digital nowadays and can be shared that way. Um, if there's a decision that someone would like to print that, that's something that can easily be done at a number of facilities without us taking on that body of work.
Okay.
Moving to public works, the twenty twenty-four fees were divided by the existing ninety-two dollars an hour and then they were. Done it, that was to give you the base hours. In looking at how I had to go through and look at the budget. There is already set fees that existed and when I asked about what the source for those fees were, I did not have a clear answer on that. So. To start at zero and be able to go to a metric-based uh, platform that would have cost recovery. We went ahead and took the cost that they had for any of their fees. Divided them by ninety-two to see the number of hours they were looking at and then went ahead and moved them forward. So. You'll see anything that was based off an hourly rate has been changed to the hundred and twenty dollars an hour and some of the fees that you'll see that have increased. Are based on that and that's the math associated with that. Um, moving into Title Four.
I'm sorry, quick question from uh, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the site development permits, those didn't change. There are. For residential and commercial and it like subdivisions are all the same permitting, uh, fee scale?
So the site development, when you look at it, is actually based off the valuation of the project that you're looking at for the land work and earthwork only. I did not touch this, this year. Um, the plan is for the next annual, when we come up, to look at compressing that. When I look at it, there's one that goes to over a million dollars and looking at sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty that would go with that. There's not really a need to have that many different, but I didn't tackle Title Twelve because I need to go through Title Twelve for code updates. Before I go ahead and start making adjustments here.
Yeah, and. Yeah, and I mean just if you were building like a decent sized shop in your backyard, you know, that's probably a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. That'd be, and it's a relatively simple project. I mean, your site development permit is pretty pricey for something relatively simple.
So so
Interesting.
Yeah, the clarification on this, this is for the actual dirt work. This is not for the cost of the shop.
Oh, not the structure.
And the dirt work and the structure. This would be just for the dirt work we were looking at it.
Okay.
That's why when we speak to it, the cost of what we're looking at, a million dollars in dirt work is a very, very, very large facility that you're looking at. So we'll compress this when we make adjustments to title twelve and how we look at that. There's a different model you can look at to go. It's residential, it's commercial, and it's a flat rate fee. So we'll look at that for the upcoming year.
Okay. Thanks.
Right, moving to page twenty eight. Um, one of the changes we have here is we come in and we look at title fourteen. Title fourteen is our environmental code. Uh, so you'll see some of the changes that are consistent there. These are reflective of the hundred and twenty dollar an hour being moved into the same format that it already was. So that's where the increases come when we're looking at from there. Okay. Moving over to page twenty nine, we go into title fifteen, building code. One of the changes that I wanted to speak to here that were coming in was we did some simplification of what we were looking at. Previously, when we looked at this, there was um, three different versions for what we were going to do with the mobile home. There were five different versions of what we were doing with the demolition permit. It was to simplify. We don't need five different versions for a demolition permit. We're going to spend two hours on a demo permit, make it a flat rate two hours when we come to the demolition. We're going to spend two hours looking at manufactured home setup because there's not much you look at. It's the slab that it sits on, the tie downs and the anchoring that are done all at the same time, and then a final when you come out. We don't go in. It's controlled by labor and industries for everything that's inside the house. We look at water hookup, sewer hookup. And then we call it good. So simplification on some of the the actual schedule was what we're looking for so people can more readily understand what they're doing and the fees that apply. So you'll see some strike throughs there and what we're looking at there. Okay, moving to page thirty. All right, there are some new additions here on page thirty and what we're looking at. We've had requests before for expedited review and how we moved through that. And previously, the only expedited review that popped up was actually for, um, you could do your single family residence or your residential or your building permit, but you could not do anything with a associated title twelve permit, a title fourteen permit, or any of your title eighteen permits to move those through. So because those are the land use and the infrastructure that go with any structure you would build, it didn't make a lot of sense that you could prioritize the building to move faster, but nothing that you needed to get to the building. So we went ahead and we're looking at putting in the expedited review program. That program actually goes ahead and takes in their normal application costs and then a thirty percent that they would look at on top of that. So they would pay that um and move that through because there's management associated with that and giving it to a third party reviewer to get the expedited review. So that's the cost associated there. And then simplification of the Washington State Building Code Energy. We had two separate line items. We didn't need two separate line items. They could easily be under one to speak to it. You'll you'll kind of see that theme as we continue to move through it. Um, okay, page thirty one, no real changes other than updating of the hourly rates when you look at it. Page thirty two, we did go through and we adjusted the single family residence duplex flat rate fee. That was to reflect the two hours of usage that they were reflecting before. Moving to page thirty three, at the top under plumbing fees, the new single family residence flat fee per unit, two hundred and forty dollars, again adjusted to match um what we were looking at there. No other changes on that page. Okay. Uh, moving into page thirty four, we're moving into the fire permits. Um, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're moving into fire permits. So this was actually calculated by West Pierce Fire and Rescue, and this is their actual cost to do the work. I did not, I don't have numbers behind the push on it, but you'll notice their modest modest changes and what they're looking at. Um, and still offering the same level of service. We will see a change this year in how we go ahead and handle permits with the new permitting system. So they'll actually be able to fold right into our permitting system um and collect those fees when we look at it. Okay. Uh, moving on to page thirty six, you'll see the fire. Sorry. Yes.
I I just had a question about the 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 fire of permits and there is uh there's a question about there's a there's a there's a there's a fee for false fire alarms. And then there are other permit fees, but is that false fire alarm fee? Is that actually payable to West Pierce? Or is it? Do we collect it and pass it through?
Um, I actually don't know. Let me council member. I can find that out for you. I I don't know if we collect it or West Pierce collects that. I would have to get back with you.
Because there there are, and and I see they're they're going to like a single code permit as opposed to the the twenty different ones that they have for which 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 makes good sense to be able to go and do that. Okay, I I guess I I I don't have any problem with the cost of the of the fees on the false alarms. I'm just curious as to whether who gets the money, uh, because the person who's inconvenienced primarily is West Pierce, although we have a fire marshal, I guess.
So I'm sorry, what was the last part you said, sir?
Well, I I I guess you just where where that false fire alarm fee goes. Yeah, we're collecting it, but I don't know that false fire alarms create an inconvenience to the city.
I don't believe that we're collecting it, but I need to check on that. That's why I said I'm not sure and I'll look into it. All the other fire fees that are collected are collected by West Pierce Fire and Rescue, and then we get an annual return on our portion of it. All right, moving to page thirty eight. Page thirty eight is the beginning of title eighteen, so land use. And the changes primarily that we're going to see here are related to the cost and moving the hourly rate as to what we're recouping. Uh, the same process here when we came in, I asked about the base fee and where we really came to as to where this was set at the the benchmark. The benchmark did not exist, so we use that as divided by the ninety two dollars an hour to figure out how many hours per permit type were being used. Then we multiplied that by the one twenty. That equates to the increase that you're seeing. There is um one new permit type that has been added in here, and it's a staff consult and what we're looking at, and it's a thirty minute meeting with staff to come in and ask questions for anybody who's looking to build. Uh, it's cheaper than what we were looking at for the pre-application conference. Pre-application conference previously was a hundred and fifty dollars, um, and we spent more money doing the pre-application by far than we were actually collecting. Even changing it to four eighty, it's possible that we're still going to be have a, that'd be a loss when we look at it, but we'll track it for the year to get the metrics on it to better understand, and then we'll adjust. The idea behind what we're looking here with the fees and the rates going forward is that with the new permitting system, we'll actively measure how many hours we spend on each permit type when we do the review. And then you go ahead and take that at the end of the year and look at how many hours do we spend to qualify what the actual cost of the permit is. That continues to grow as years go by. Um, I typically look at a five year rolling history, which would be the preference. So it'll take a while to build that history to get there, a minimum of three of the permit type so that you can actually go ahead and average amongst it. But the idea is that we negate the highs and lows and that we start to get actual true cost for where we're at. And then you're focused on cost recovery. So that could go up, it could go down. I've seen it go both ways. Um, with previous jurisdiction, I think I had seventeen go up and eighteen go down. So it really just depends on the flux of the permit you're seeing, the code that changes associated with it. But it's an accurate way to actively get cost recovery and not overspend or be cutting yourself short. Also allows you to keep a flat rate fee throughout the year. Um, absorb some of the losses you might have and then move forward, make that adjustment the next year. Okay, moving to page thirty nine. Uh, I do have one scribner error that I'll be moving there. At the top row, we look at it under critical area engineering shoreline. Um, there was one that's the fourth line down that actually should be eliminated. That should it's already absorbed when you look at variance type two. So we were moving that moving forward. The rest is actually just forward, uh, what we're looking at for the cost associated with it. The same with page forty as we move through it. We did go through to simplify the tree removal permits. You can see that it's a fairly large section. Uh, there was many overlaps where it was the same comment repeated various sections. So the clean version, when you look at it, comes in and just says this is single family residence. This is other zones. Right? With one line item through there to be able to move through that. And then the separate section we're looking at for the tree emergency removal permit, whether it's single family residence or the other zones when they look at that. Still a relatively low cost permit and what we're looking at at a hundred and twenty five dollars. That's reflective of the work that we actually do with it and that they're able to take immediate action or remove the tree due to life safety or structure safety concerns. But then they have to have an harvest report. They come in with to show that it was a diseased or danger tree that needed to be removed. So it's a very low lift when it comes to staff and the review of that. It's just reviewing the report more than anything. Okay. I think that actually brings me to the end because the rest were red line strike through. Any questions?
Mr. Brands Center. Unfortunately, I want to go back to the be beginning of your presentation regarding the calculation of the um, looking at the uh a hundred and twenty dollar per hour fee and then and yeah, I guess I'm just trying to understand this because originally and I apologize because I wasn't here for your budget presentation where maybe this was explained, but that the uh originally I I read some things that said that this is for a hundred percent cost recovery and then so and I asked the question about why a hundred and not eighty five. I got some information back today that 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 talked about we're we're not recovering a hundred percent of a hundred percent. We're recovering a hundred percent of fifty six percent.
Correct.
Okay, so what is the rationale for not recovering? I mean, basically, most of the costs are employee costs. And an employee who does this work, there's a cost to the city and we selected the eighty five percent cost recovery because while their work is done on permits that are applied for by an applicant, that some of the work in this process is actually more to the benefit of the community than it is to the individual act. And we figured that eighty five percent is applicant related and 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 we wanted to look at doing value. Uh, and then though I get to the the explanation today and 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 the fact that a given employee only has fifty six percent of their paid time as productive time towards their job. That struck me as extremely inefficient. And then in the in the the work that where it talks about the where the hours that people don't work, it said fifteen hours free customer service weekly is is not work.
Correct.
So what are people doing for those fifteen hours?
They they're actually responding to people, the citizenry is what they end up responding to. It's people that come in. It's people that call in with questions. It's how do I go ahead and get a permit? They've not yet applied for a permit. This is nothing to charge the hours against. Um, it's actually really common in what we do that most people get fifteen minutes to thirty minutes on a routine basis, be it from a permit tech, the building official questions on how they want to proceed, but they don't have a building permit.
Okay, now, you know, in so it's more a question of that's an hour that you can't charge a hundred and twenty dollars for.
Correct.
But it is a real cost of operating the permitting system.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, it is the real cost of operating the department.
So then it strikes me that a hundred and twenty may be too low. If we really want to not say it's a hundred and twenty dollars because we're trying to make it match up with each specific permit. But if we're trying to say that we have a permitting system that has a specific staff to be able to go and do that, and the person that called with a question may or may not in the future submit a permit to be able to go and do that. But it's part of the work that we have to do to do that. You know, I I I would say, and then maybe it's not real good to do it with this particular fee schedule change to do that. But but I was would venture to say that those additional fifteen hours a week are spent to make permitting system work well for the for for the greater community. And that that's a real cost. And that we should should be calculated into where we're trying to get to an eighty five percent cost recovery for just for just having a system, not and not trying to parse it out fractionally by all the individual permits. So I would say that, you know, a year from now, if we're looking at this here, you know, you know, I I I would would sort of like to look to say that that's a cost that 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 should have eighty five percent cost recovery instead of what it looks like you're saying there's zero percent cost recovery for those fifteen hours a week for each employee that they spend to do that. Because it 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 just seems a counterintelligence of the eighty five percent cost recovery of the entire cost of the of of the of the the holistic quantity of work as opposed to do that. Um, I I I do like that the fee schedule has got lots of red lines in it that took that took things out that made it uh not not just make it easier for me to read, but make it easier for people in the public to read to try to try to figure things out and 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 to be be able to go and do that. So, you know, thank you for your work on this going on. I just say that 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 it's uh I think working on the fees is a never ending process.
Thank you.
And then I had one other question in premise Ms. Kraus is that so where are we at with the McGabick Center City Day fees? The that 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 feed the public art fund are, it looks like they're not changing. Okay, and and when was the last time we changed them? I mean. Okay, that's another thing that I that a year from now I would look to say that with inflation and costs that to 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 people that uh that that are using that, that there may be is a an increase in an increase in that fee would help us advance some of the and deal with some of the increased costs in the public art realm.
On that point, I forget if when our contribution from lodging tax ends in twenty twenty six, I think.
I think the last payment is it's a twenty years and I think it ends twenty seven. We had it in the previous.
Yeah, yeah. Does that end our entitlement to the fifteen city days or no? It keeps going forward? Okay, good. All right, thanks.
I I hate to set out the same energy. He said that the agreement allows the city days to extend for a number of years beyond the contributing years, but not forever.
Great numbers, good. Did you? Sounds good. Any further?
Oh, no, I was wondering if there are any other questions.
Did you have some Mr. Don for Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so for the the development center fees, is it more or less common for other folks to use the hourly, you know, rationale versus a a fixed fee and just, you know, whatever everything costs is just a lump sum. You're not charging any hours and and tracking fees. What's what's the more common or is there a more common? Is it just split pretty fifty fifty, you know, amongst different jurisdictions?
It it changes from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, but the one that I like to use is the flat rate fee using the five year rolling average for the permit processing time. Um, the reason is because it's predictability for the customer when they come in. When we say this is how much it is, this is how much it is. Not it'll lots you this many hours and then after the number of hours. I did a fee based deposit before when I was with Kitzat, and we went off of that to the flat rate for predictability. Um, we didn't really see much of a loss when it came to our income. Sometimes we were a little over on a permit because we learned to do it faster. Other times we got a new change that came with the code and it slowed it down. And so we would absorb those and kind of move that across into the next year. And so we would absorb those and kind of move that across into the next year. But the reality was there was predictability for the customer. We do set some rules around it, what I would like to look at, but we'll look about that for next year, but. It's like you look at two cycles that come in for review. So the first submittal, the second submittal. Anything after the second submittal goes to an hourly, but you have to have a system that allows you to hourly track what you're doing. And that's for cost recovery. When we look at it, the basis is typically set off of two submittals. With the intention that we'll give you comments, you'll make the adjustments to the comments, it will come back, we'll review, we'll approve, we'll move forward. Some people have different mindsets as to how it comes through or the conversations or the re-submittals are not holistic in what we look at, so we're not able to prove on the second submittal. So at that point, you look at a third submittal. It's like, okay, now you should pay an hourly because now we're outside of the cost that we set. To absorb to handle this permit when we look at inspections many times are handled on an hourly basis, so it's actual cost recovery for what they're spending versus making an estimate. Um because a single family residence that's having grading work done compared to Costco. Is going to have a significantly different number of times we're going to need to go there. So you just pay for what you're actually using when it comes to the inspections versus. Making an estimate or potentially having to do a refund or anything like that.
And and then the tracking mechanism. So if you're on an hourly basis, someone has to input that they're working on something and actually collect the fee. Versus you just click a button and here's the fee that you have to pay and you know, whatever happens, happens.
Yeah, so the permitting, most every permitting system except for the one we're currently using actually tracks the number of hours that you spent on review. Or the time that inspectors go out. The new permitting system we're looking at that we're bringing onboard. Tracks the hourly and what we spend and how much time goes in it. Track cycles. For first, second, third, fourth cycle in terms of iterations of how many times it's submitted. Um it allows you to go ahead and track first pass yield. How many hours are actually on average spent on the first review, second review, things of that nature. There's a lot more data analytics that come out of a permitting system. Than our current system allows us to do, which is why we put in, got the Department of Commerce and we're moving to the new permitting system.
What is? I saw there's some something in our future agenda. What is the new permitting system?
So the new permitting system we're looking at is it's called Clarity. Camino is the common name. Um Pierce County has it for their onboard guide. Every jurisdiction in Kitsap County is currently using their onboard guide. We would be the first for the permitting system when we look at, but it is something that is. A positive because when you look at it, it has the ability to be. Handled and manually updated by actual staff without having to hire a business analyst. Or anything of that nature to run the system completely behind the scenes. Uh which doesn't exist with many of the other systems. I think Pierce County is running four people to run Powell's when we're looking at it. Kitsap County is running one person that does nothing but their smart government. Their system, this is a self managed system that you don't need that for.
And and like we would, no one else uses this uh.
Not in Washington currently, others do use the.
Yeah.
In California and other jurisdictions, just not in Washington yet.
And it's called clarity?
Clarity with an I.
I get I guess um. Wrapping it up, Ms. Kraus, um. The fiscal note on all these, I might I might have missed it. The fiscal note on all the increases, do you know how much in total it'll raise or?
Here, uh just the calculation for the cost recovery, but you know, we the amount of revenue that we get from. Permits will, yeah.
Okay.
So the revenue estimates are separate from the calculations.
Okay. But how much will it increase our revenues by?
It's already built into the budget based on the.
So that was my second question. Did you anticipate it in all these? You you brought before us tonight, are they all embedded in the budget already?
They're already embedded.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I I I I did I did have one more question that I with my notes I wanted to get to and I'm looking at page forty. And it's on in the section regarding free removal permits for single family and mixed residential zone lots. And. It looks like what we've made the change is that for lots less than ten thousand. Square feet. We're not going to require a true repermit permit at all. And previously, we we didn't require a permit unless. The lot, but but we did require a permit if the lot had features that related to in our critical areas ordinance. Where it had Gary Oak trees and things to do that. But now even if a lot has critical areas, we're not going to charge a permit.
So, no, that's not correct when you look at it. If you take a look at the top bullet point, it'll say zone lots less than ten thousand square feet. Um and then it'll go ahead and move it and say if it has Gary Oak. No Gary Oak on site, not located in the shoreline setback, not located in the area that we're looking at.
And that's how that's the that that is, that is how it has been. But then the next section down is lots of the same size. Where there are Gary Oaks or there is within a shoreline, and it is being changed to no permit fee. And it seems that we're. De-emphasizing the fact that there are critical areas on the lot and 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 is that?
No.
Really, I don't think that's really what we want to do. I think we we, you know, in the in the in. We we did want to pay attention to critical areas and then the. The same thing happened below for the lots greater than ten thousand square feet of where we. Make no differentiation as to if there are critical areas on the parcel or if there are not. You know, and I'm. Uh yeah, I again, I I I would be more comfortable with. The way it was. Um be be because you 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 know, I I think the the the. The 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 commu- you know, we have heard in in and around immunity topics that the community is sensitive to. Environmentally and and or to at least paying attention to. Where there are critical areas doing out that maybe. To go up and to just say critical areas make no difference is really what we're doing. I I I I'm not understanding the rationale for saying that.
Yeah, no, no problem. So I appreciate you pointing it out because that's an error.
Which one are we on?
Uh the second bullet point, we look at it for the zoned areas with less than.
Uh huh.
Where we have the critical area, it would have been the one twenty five. We're going to the one twenty five and we're looking at those as you look down through. Even when we come to the zone lots greater than one thousand with the critical areas, we'll go ahead and we'll look at the one twenty five in terms of the fee that's associated with it.
So we're just going to adjust the amounts in the final version?
We can adjust the amounts in the final version. There are other cleanups that we have to do, one or two that I need to do.
Like I said, particularly for the ten thousand square feet with critical areas, just like the amount to not be zero.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, one twenty five is what we went to. Sorry, I was going to swap with Ms. Dodsworth. There's no other questions.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council members, um on page forty five to forty seven, there's. Just a few modifications. They're really pretty small changes, mostly. Um of course, all of our fees are there to meet our forty five percent cost recovery. Uh several of these things are really just definitions or additional language to make it easier for. Uh staff or guests uh to understand what the, you know, clarify the fee or the rate or the need. And then on the specific things that were raised, uh it was really looking at regional uh cost comparisons and kind of making sure that we are in the market rate. But I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. Starting forty five to forty seven, page forty five, forty seven.
It's like they are not too significant.
I beg your pardon. No, they're pretty simple. And um so we have clarified things like as we've utilized the pavilion. You know, what we found in the last year is people are wanting to be there longer than eight hours, but you hire staff for eight hours, so we did get into overtime, so we're just looking at those. Or they show up two hours early or they want to stay late and um. There's costs associated with those things, so we're just covering those um primarily the staffing and the additional rates and let people know that. You know, when we're setting those contracts. All of the coordination that happens with that with custodial use and sometimes there's police if it's after hours. That, you know, we have to do those in advance. It's not spontaneous. But pretty insignificant and we haven't really raised the prices of the shelters for many, many, many years.
So the bouncy house is out.
Yeah, we can still do those for special events, but what we've found is that Ellen and I, actually, you have to inspect a bouncy house like a carnival ride. And so um what you're finding is folks are showing up with just. Toothless Joe's jumpy house that they rented from the side of the road or maybe they bought their own. And and there's a there's a lot of safety issues with jumpy houses with wind, rain, if you have different. Yeah, well, just different sized people in there, right? It can cause state safety issues and so when we. Utilize them or we're managing them, there's specific rules, but we can't guarantee other people are and it puts the city at risk, so.
Yeah, I had a question. Um why was camping added in the special use permit uh thing for additional fees? What what's that about?
Um well, uh we do at times allow overnight camping with a special use permit like the Boy Scouts did their Boy Scoutarama and so they wanted to do a camping area. Sometimes if we have a big bike racer, it's a two day event, there might be a few folks that are staying, so we want to make sure that we can um. Benefit from that revenue, we can control it. Also, in your new camping code, you know, camping is not allowed in parks or public spaces unless it's tied to a special use permit. So I just wanted there to be continuity between those two codes.
Great, thank you. I saw a guy out there camping at Forest Hill coming on Saturday. I was going to ask if he paid his permit fee, but.
Oh, and where was that?
Up on the. Hill.
Was there a blue tarp involved? Okay, that would not be, that would not be someone that's permitted.
No, I didn't think so.
It wasn't part of the.
It wasn't part of the camp ramen, no.
But you should let us know that because we will help take, we'll take care of that issue once it's been identified, so.
Yeah, so up from walking up Lake as you go up the hill. On the trail, the running trail, right at the T intersection up there. It looked like he packed up and paid, but.
Well, people can hang out all day at the park, but they can't be there overnight, so.
Right, yeah. Anything else, Ms. Kraus, on the proposed fee schedule amendments?
Not on the fee schedule, it's just scheduled to go back to the city council, but I see.
Oh, Mr. Brand Center, thank you.
Um yeah, I I just had a question about the. The the last item that related to the police related fees. Um and it's under. I'm looking on page forty seven and it's under a section called renumbered sections. And there's no fee amount shown.
So we had a lot of, we had a lot of different sections, but because of the.
Planning and development fees came under the category C, it shifted everything up. And so we have less categories. So I just renumbered it. So instead of, so C is for development services, planning and development fees. Which then there are no other uh categories within that. So it used to be where fire would have a category and then there was other categories within that. But because we just have it all lumped to under category C, then parks moved up from G to D, which means the other. Fees for um animal control and the permits.
So so it's just saying that the. Within the schedule, the the number of the fee has changed, but. Down in the actual fee schedule, the fee is the same.
Correct.
So you have to go and do that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I mean, then my question was on. There was a reference in that section about the 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 fees that were changing. And there was a reference to dry camping. And was that a a a Scrivener's errand supposed to be day camping or?
No, dry camping means we don't provide any kind of utility, so you can't dump your waste. Um you, there's no electricity. It's just dry camping.
Okay, but it could still rain.
It could still rain, yes. It can. It's a, yeah, it's just a term to show that there aren't any facilities available for RVs and that kind of thing at this point.
Yeah, so this is something for that trivia pursuit camp.
Very good. So now we've got the proposed biennial budget.
So really, I don't have a presentation, but I wanted to provide an opportunity because this is going to the city council for. Adoption next Monday. So this really is your opportunity. If there's some areas that you want me to elaborate on or questions that you may have. Um that's the purpose of this.
Got it. This is our time to shine.
Yes, so we've had a lot of meetings, uh but still you may have some questions, so.
Well, I will open it up for any general questions for the twenty twenty five, twenty six budget. Stroking, the Ms. Thank you for providing this information tonight. There's a lot of information on personnel changes. Um so I just want to make sure because this is an important part of what we do, personnel cost being the largest thing that we pay for. Certainly out of the general fund. So let's start with page seventy two. Okay. So this is the list of what are we looking at? Are these all general fund? These aren't all general fund positions. These are just. Positions being added and positions being eliminated.
Yes, that's correct.
So. Can you go through those, please?
Sure. So starting on page seventy two. So we're increasing the positions by a halftime FTE. So the PRA legal specialist. Is in addition of one point O FTE. We have the GIS position, which you're going to see an increase to pop planning and public works. But it's a decrease from admin services and the reason for that is because the primary users. Of the GIS position is planning and public work, so it made sense. Um and also. All of the work that planning and public works is doing related to fifty two ninety and the implementation of the new permitting system. Um this position will be able to help out.
And and PRA legal specialist, actually, we used to find out of ARPA, so the position is being eliminated down in ARPA.
Yes, that's correct.
But now being brought into the general fund.
Yes.
Okay. Capital Development Projects Manager, what is that?
I'm sorry, I had my eyes dilated today, so I'm having a hard time looking at this. So we have a capital projects uh development manager. And this is in the uh Parks and Recreation and. Let's see. So we added, yes, we added a second project manager. So we have um. Stacy and David. And then we have the police officers. We added four police officers and actually really this is funding of the four police officers in the twenty three and twenty four budget. We had not funded those positions, so we're adding those there. And then the eliminations of the positions, there is one court clerk position that is being um. Eliminated as a to balance the budget. Um and then there's the DB assistant that's being eliminated and this is the general fund portion. We're using just the grant portion and that's been that way for quite some time. And then we have the Associate City Attorney. That was an ARPA funded position and that position is going away. And then we have the PRA legal specialist that you already um talked about where we've covered up on top, but we've eliminated the ARPA funding portion of it. Um we also have the Public Works Engineering Director position with our Planning and Public Works Director Remac. We were able to eliminate that position and then consolidate the two departments. And then we have an office assistant position that is being eliminated. That is a vacant position. So with those changes, the net increase is a point five FTE.
Okay, the four police officer positions and there's an explanation down towards the bottom on page seventy two, are those? I I don't know the rank deputy positions, I guess, for like like the. Line officers, they're not.
They're police, so yes, yes, they're not like.
Officers or whatever you call them.
They're what?
I don't know the exact.
They're they're police officers. They're not your captains or your.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I remember then we're giving up two sergeant positions though within the biennium.
Yes.
Okay, so how will that work?
And that is the retirements.
And we're not filling those positions. Okay. And 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 you were anticipating. And 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 you're anticipating that those will not be filmed.
Correct.
By any, okay, okay. So now move to page seventy three. The proposed proposed a decrease in four FTEs. Go through those again, but this time it's Program Coordinator Neighborhood.
So these are the positions that are funded in twenty twenty five, but they're not funded in the current budget for twenty twenty six. Our hope would, excuse me, our hope would be that we are able to cover those positions in twenty twenty six, but we need to see how the finances.
Okay, so the these are limited, as you call them, limited duration positions. They're funded for one year.
Yes.
And then we have to make some kind of decision next year sometime.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
We would likely do that as part of the mid biennium review.
All right. And then there's more on page. Oh, so so these are the four.
Yes.
But the other one, there are some limited duration positions that you are saying keep throughout the biennium?
Yes, that's correct. And those are shown like the Program Coordinator for Economic Development. That's point five FTE that will be funded in twenty twenty six. We also have the Code Compliance Safety Inspector for Rental Housing Safety Program, Program Assistant and Property Abatement. So they're all listed under twenty twenty six, which means we would keep them. And that includes like the PRA Legal Specialist, the Domestic Violence Office Assistant that's funded by the STOP Grant. We have a Maintenance Worker in Parks. That's one time general fund. The Parks Development Project Manager, and those two will be kept through the twenty twenty six budget. We have a CDBG Coordinator Position for point two five FTE, the point two O for the Program Assistant for Rental Housing Safety Program, and then the Program Assistant for Property Abatement at point eighty. So.
How long can you keep a limited duration employee limited duration, given that we have collective bargaining agreements in place?
Those are handled through our City Attorney and our Human Resources Director, but they are very good at giving notification to the collective bargaining groups on whatever the intent is.
Well, thank you for your work. Appreciate it. It's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Bokey. Any other questions? Here we'll have a chance to review this, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I think our, I would say our general lack of of questions and comments comes from discussing this multiple times and and having good discussion and really, I think, you know, hitting on the key topics early on that, you know, what's where's the budget shortfall coming from and what what are our our real choices? You know, and and what's been done in the past to correct things and try to get the budget on track. And so I just want to say thank you for providing all the information at all the meetings, including this one. It's been really clearly laid out, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions? If not, thank you. I echo the laudatory comments on good work each and every time you've provided us additional information on the budget. We appreciate it. There's a lot there, obviously, and it does reflect the priorities of council. We just wish for good economic opportunities to sustain the general fund over the next two years, so we'll hope for the best. Yep, anything else? That's it? Thank you.
That's it.
So you can stay there if you'd like, since you're in the seat for the City Manager. Do you have any other reports you'd like to provide us tonight?
I don't have any reports other than some upcoming events. We have on November thirteenth at six P M the Deserts Desserts on the driveway event at the Spring Brook Connections, fifty one oh five Solberg Drive, Suite Number Eight in Spring Brook. And then on November fifteenth, we have the between six and nine thirty P M with the Lakewood Chamber. Thanks for giving holiday auction and dinner at the Adriatic at Oak Brook, and that's fifty dollars a person. On December fourth, we have at eight A M the Annual Employee Recognition Event at the Clover Park Technical College Rotunda.
December fourth, that that is?
December fourth at eight A M.
See on the calendar yet, but okay.
And that is for the Employee Recognition Event, the annual one that occurs at the Rotunda.
Okay, we'll get that on the calendar.
Yeah. Yeah, and if it's not out there, I'm sure Brianna will put it on.
It'll be there shortly, yeah.
Okay. So on December fourth, between eleven thirty and one P M is the A W C District Six Meeting. And that would be joining A W C members and staff and share stories from home with other city officials from the A W C District Number Six and connecting over lunch to share about your city priorities, hear about A W C's twenty twenty five legislative agenda, and A W C's ongoing work to update A W C bylaws to ensure the A W C Board remains representative of the membership throughout the state. And that's at Ordin City Hall.
Ordin.
Yeah. And then on the next day, December fifth, between five and seven P M, we have a Tacoma Pierce County Chambers Public Officials Holiday Reception at the May's America Car Museum in Tacoma. December fifth.
Yep.
Five to seven P M. December seventh, at four thirty P M, we have the Holiday Parade and Christmas Tree Lighting at the Lakewood City Hall. Then December thirteenth, we have at six P M the two two S B C T Lancers Community Connector Event at Thornwood Castle. The next day, December fourteenth, we have the Jingle Bell Run at Fort Silicon Park, and that's our last event for the year.
Okay.
And that's all that I have.
Okay, I see things starting to come through here. Thank you, Ms. Schumacher. Hey, questions of Ms. Kraus? Lots of events coming up. So desserts on the driveway, I hope it's indoors somewhere because it's gonna be A, dark, and B, wet. So it's inside somewhere, I think at Spring Brook Connections.
Yes, it's sweet. Yeah, I I'm not really sure. It says suite A, so I assume that's inside.
Yeah, I hope so. Yeah. Uh, I believe so. It's in the building. Well, it's on Solberg, so I think as you go down, it's on the right hand side as you go down Bridgeport.
Because it says it's in a suite.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, right. So Council Comments, Mr. Branstadter. We'll start with you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, the the one thing I wanted to comment on is that the in the on the agenda for next week, there is a uh, an item that is it's on our agenda here. It's item number thirteen for next week, and it says relating to the approval of projects to be funded with revenue generated by the City of Lakewood's Transportation Benefit District and extending the sunset date. We have routinely every year or two, in as in order to keep it aligned with the tip and the capital improvement program is made of made agendas and updates to the Transportation Benefit District allowed of projects. And and then we, you know, and and it's appropriate for us to do that this year. However, I'm concerned about including in such an ordinance something that extends the sunset date of the Transportation Benefit District. Because while we are allowed to do that councilmanically, that it it is a tax increase to the community by extending the period of time in which car tab taxes will be connected. And I think we should do that in a more deliberate, transparent way. I think we can make a good case to the community that Transportation Benefit District funds have been very beneficial in terms of the things that they funded, both in terms of the annual things like chip ceiling and other things, as well as providing either full funding or partial funding or the matching funding necessary for a lot of transportation projects, particularly ones that that relate to pedestrian improvements. But I don't think we should, in a routine updating of the list of projects that the Transportation Benefit District could fund, slide in an extension of the sunset date, why, and I'm not quite sure what's what's intended to be there. I think those to those should those should be two separate actions, and that that next week we should deal with the list of projects. And then we should work with informing the community that the district a number of years in advance from now needs to be extended in order for that to continue, make the case, and then sometime in twenty twenty five, put on our agenda to consider an extended sunset date rather than just slide it slide it into a housekeeping ordinance on the on the list of projects. And I, you know, I I guess I, I'd like to really like for you to talk with the with the City Manager about amending the ordinance to be considered and 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 coming up with a process that includes some public communications in a timeline regarding extending the life of the district.
Okay. Is this something, Ms. Kraus, that we can bifurcate next week or set it over?
This is something that we will put onto separate agendas. And so the sunset date and the transportation projects that would be funded, that in the past has been on one ordinance. The difference is we will take this to a study session so that we can have that conversation and then bring it back to the city council for adoption on two separate items. So that's tentatively scheduled, and I haven't talked to the City Manager yet. Tentatively scheduled.
Off next week, then?
Yes, yes. Sure.
Sunset date would have been this next year, I think.
Twenty forty four.
Twenty forty four.
Yes.
We're getting extended potentially by a year.
Or a year, yeah.
To match the bonds that will be sold.
So that'll be coming forth to the city council on second study session in February and then back for adoption in
Okay.
March, yeah.
Very good. Any else, Mr. Branstadter? Okay. Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not be able to attend Desserts on the Driveways tomorrow. But I do plan on attending the the thing on Friday. Thanks for giving holiday dinner an option, so I to put, uh, plan on attending that. Yeah, I just appreciate the new kind of sets of eyes on things that Mr. Remac is providing. I think that it's it's nice to get a a fresh set of eyes on things as we go through, you know, fee updates and things. Sometimes we get set in our ways. And so, yeah, I'm just excited to see what comes in the next, you know, few years with that. Thanks.
Very good. Councilmember Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with that. I really, what Councilmember Pearson just said about a new fresh set of eyes and a new perspective on things. I think the presentations today were really insightful and informative, and so I appreciate all the time that staff took for that to continue the education on that. Last week, I was able to attend the Arts Commission Retreat on Friday, and that was really informative and really just a great experience with the Arts Commission that has been doing so much lately and has really grown their program and what they do for the community. So that was exciting. And I will be at Desserts on the Driveway tomorrow, so I'll be there. And I think that's about it for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Councilmember Bokey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna try to make Desserts on the Driveway if I can, you know, keep myself organized. And then I'd also, I I think I'm gonna try to go on the Friday night event. Beyond that, that's all I got. And I do appreciate tonight. I mean, tonight's always a fun night when they start giving money away. I guess that's the wrong thing to say. We don't actually give money away. We actually are, we we are giving money for causes and 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 services that we hope will better Lakewood in in both the one percent case and and the lodging tax. So it's always a good night, and I really do appreciate the work of the committees involved because it's important work, and and we really do rely on them to to make good study decisions. So I I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the SSMCP meeting, and I wanted to make sure that I complimented Mayor for a job well done.
Well, thank you.
It was a sensitive day for a lot of people, but you carried it over really well.
Oh, good, thank you.
Thank you for that. I was gonna talk about this when Mayor is here, but the graffiti that was written on the walkway and around the Wahop Lake.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I walked around there Saturday, and I walked with a group of people, and they could not say enough about how much they appreciated the response that they got once that was reported. And one of the people said that they had called Mary and told her, you don't need to call me back. I just want to say thank you. But Mary called her back, and that meant more to her than.
I saw that. It looked like it was either patched or something.
Right.
Painted over the asphalt. Was that graffiti?
It was some not so nice stuff.
Okay.
Yes, they didn't say exactly what it was, but I wanted to share that because they really appreciated everything that went there. They said the police was there just like, just like that. So they say let you know to make sure that this report out on that. And today I had an opportunity to attend to tour Watts, the Western Air Defense Sector Base. Have you been to that? It must have been dawn. It, I hope that if any of you ever have an opportunity to go to that, and I did talk to him about that, and they said if we can get a group together, let them know, and they have to schedule a date for you
Great.
to go, because right now they probably.
A little busy?
Very, yeah. So 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 if we can get a date and submit it, they will try to do a to a compliment. It is, it is, I I don't know, I get so excited when I see the stuff that they do to protect us. The things that they go through to 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 do that. They show that they have a forty second timeframe to do certain things that comes up unexpectedly. I mean, it's just, it's amazing. So I wanted to share that with you guys, and if you get a chance to, please go see it, because that was great. Let's see, and I do dessert on the, I don't have that on my calendar. Would you send that to me, please? And I do plan to attend that tomorrow.
Great.
Okay, and let's see, and Friday night I will be at the Chamber event as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. The big event last week was the South Shore Military Community Partnership Meeting on Thursday. It was the Elected Official, Elected Officials Council, and it was an interesting day after the election. So it was good to see so many folks there, and my comments were that I thanked all those who ran and won, all those who ran and didn't win, and all those who continue to serve because we're all strengthened by their example of commitment to public service, because, you know, we all win when they participate. And I truly mean that. It was a good event, and Congresswoman Strickland was there, and all the leadership from JBLM. It's just, it's a really well-done event. We honored Bill Adams and and Don Anderson for their service to SSMCP and all things Joint Base Lewis McCord for their years there of service. And we welcome the new Chairman of the Nisqually Tribe, Chairman Hauck, or Choke, rather. And I think he appreciated being there as well. So it was a nice event. I will attend the dessert on the driveway thing, hopefully indoor driveway away from the rain. It'll be a little wet tomorrow, and I won't be able to do the event on Friday. I've got another event that evening. But I will try to do all the other events that were listed by. Um, but I will try to do all the other events that were listed by uh. Ms. Kraus, including the Employee Recognition Event on the fourth. And there's something else on the fifth, so we'll know more about that next week. Anything else for the good of the order? Good presentations tonight. We're gonna have a budget, it looks like. Our projects, we're going to fully fund with councilmanic bonds for the TBD. Good stuff. All right, we're adjourned.